Participate in our meeting for the public. And Nat, will you be?
Recording in progress.
Yes, Clementine will kick us off and I'll continue with our announcement.
Okay, so let's have our awesome city clerk start us off.
Hi, sorry, I think I had our mini, our meeting playing in two places, I apologize. I had the YouTube going as well and I forgot to mute it, sorry.
How do I do that? I've got two of them here, plus lives, so that's funny.
It's like a kaleidoscope.
Yes.
This city of Monterey is committed to the safe public attendance of its public meetings. Masks are required for all who attend in person regardless of vaccination status, except for those who are younger than two years old or have a medical condition that prevents wearing a mask. We ask that attendees in the council chamber keep their phones and devices muted in order to prevent audio interference and any feedback with our hybrid meeting.
As we return to more normal activities, the city of Monterey continues to offer virtual methods for public participation. Governor Newsom's order remains in effect, his executive order, which allows us to hold public meetings during the COVID-19 pandemic virtually. If you're not joining us here in person at the council chambers, you can participate by joining on Zoom Gov using the Zoom app on your computer or mobile device, and also by calling into the meeting via telephone. To join us, please use the link or phone number listed on isearchmonterey.org on the agenda there, and you'll find the agenda under the recent tab. To join by telephone, please dial toll-free 833-568-8864, and then enter the meeting ID number, which is 1601253340. And when you're prompted to enter a participant ID, press pound one more time. Detailed instructions on how to use Zoom is available on our website at monterey.org-publicmeetings. To make a public comment on today's agendized study session topic only using the Zoom app, you can virtually raise your hand by pressing the raise hand button at the bottom of your screen. If you've dialed in by telephone, please raise your hand by dialing star nine, and then unmute yourself by dialing star six. You must do both. Public commenters will be muted until it's their turn to speak. And we ask that you stay within the subject matter of today, today's agendized study session, subject to a time limit that will be established for today's meeting, which will show on a countdown timer on the screen. If you're connected live on Zoom, the timer is accurate with no delay. Today's meeting is also being streamed live on the city's YouTube account, which is available at youtube.com/cityofmonterey with a 10-second delay, and then also on Comcast Channel 25, which has a 90-second delay. And we look forward to receiving public comment this afternoon as always.
Good, nicely said, so we'll call the meeting to order, and we invite people to join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
All right, before we get to the one item on our study session, allow me to introduce your very caring city clerk. Dan Albert is here in the chambers. Alan Hoffa, Ed Smith, and Tyler Williamson are participating by Zoom. Our acclaimed city attorney is with us, as well as our accomplished city manager and our very able assistant city manager. So we're all here. And I think without too much further ado, well, in a moment, I'll ask, we'll turn it over to our city manager. It's, I think it's, it's an interesting topic. The whole idea of sewer systems, storm, stormwater systems is in the news, something obviously that we all use every day, probably take for granted. On the other hand, with the Pure Water Monterey Project, the 3,500 acre feet that is being processed by the sewer agency, otherwise known as Monterey One Water. Oh, I get one or two acronyms, right, I think. And also, the expansion is in discussion right now between Monterey One Water, the Water Management District, as well as Cal-Am, for an additional 2,200 acre feet of recycled water to go into the seaside basin as an alternative to a potential desal plant, which is right now more or less frozen at the Coastal Commission level. So I think it's going to be interesting for us to talk about our sewer infrastructure, stormwater, and we might have a question or two again about how our system contributes to this larger system. So with that, we'll turn it over to our city manager.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Oftentimes, in, in this chamber, you have residents, stakeholders, businesses, other local representatives from nonprofits coming and talking about how much they appreciate city services, whether it's the library, or the police services, the fire services. You, you never have someone coming up appreciating the service that is being actually mostly used by our residents, which is our sewer system. It's, it's one of those things that, one of those assets in the city of Monterey that we take for granted, that it works, and it's probably, like I said, one of the services that is used daily by, by our visitors and our residents alike. So today, when we talk about our sanitary sewer collection system, we want to provide you with an update because it's actually a success story that started many, many years ago, decades ago, in the late 90s, when the city council and the staff at that time realized we have to do some significant investments into our system. And that was based on a lot of different parameters at that time. So today, our public works team will update you about our sewer, sanitary sewer collection system. And I think I will punt it over to our public works director, Steve Witry, who will make the introduction of this topic.
Thank you, Hans, appreciate that. And, and you know, as you say, the sanitary sewer system is, is only a problem when you see that it's not working. When it's not working, it's, it's a problem for everybody. When it's working perfectly, it's often forgotten about, forgotten about. And we really strive not to be making front page news with our system. You know, as Hans mentioned, we are making tremendous strides for efficiencies. Part of the process that we want to do is get back in front of council on a more regular basis, maybe every other year or so, identifying how our system is performing, letting the public know how our system is performing, and you know, letting them know what's going on with our system in, in general. In, in large measure, the effort goes to a team of individuals. Tricia Wotan, our environmental services manager, spearheads that effort, working with the senior engineer Tom Hardy, and Kevin Anderson is an integral part of this team as well. Kevin is, is our, as our field guy who responds very quickly to, with video cameras and whatever assistance, and he knows our system like the back of our hand, and he's really a value to this team. With that introduction, what I'm going to do is turn over to Tricia Wotan. She'll redo her presentation, talking about our sewer system, and please ask any questions as it goes along. Is this something for education purpose for you and the community? Thanks.
Great, thank you, Steve. I'm going to take a moment just to bring my screen up here. Let's see if I can get this working. Okay, Clementine, or folks, do you see the first slide?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, excellent, great. Well, thank you, Steve, thank you, Hans, thank you, mayor and members of the council. As everyone has shared today, we are giving you a, an update on the city's sanitary sewer program. This presentation is going to cover 10 topics. The overview will talk about the system's configuration, applicable regulations for the sewer system, sewer spills or overflows and spill response, infrastructure rehabilitation needs, the fat, oil, and grease control program, the sewer master planning project, the recent program audit results, program funding, the next steps for the sewer program overall. And lastly, we'll mention a new Monterey One Water Low Income Sewer Bill Assistance Program. Okay, to start today, I wish to provide you with a few quick facts. The city owns and operates an approximate 100-mile sewage collection system. That system then flows into the regional Monterey One Water Collection System and conveys wastewater north to the Regional Treatment Plant, or RTP, in Marina. The whole of this system is regulated by the state water board through multiple regulatory orders. And generally, overall, the goal of the orders is to prohibit sewage discharges to the environment for public and environmental health and safety purposes. And to accomplish this goal, the orders also require a detailed plan for how the city will properly operate, maintain, and rehabilitate this utility system. So for some regulatory context, the state orders require the city and other sewer agencies and operators to develop and implement a comprehensive sanitary sewer system management plan, or SSMP. That plan is required to address 11 mandated elements. And those are program goals, organization, legal authority, system operation and maintenance, engineering design and performance standards, spill or overflow emergency response actions, fats, oils, and grease control, system evaluations and capacity assurances, program monitoring, measurement, and modifications, program audits, and a communications program for which today's presentation, as Steve mentioned, is a part of those public communication efforts. And lastly, of note, I do wish to say that the state water board is currently revising the sewer regulatory orders. So the city is anticipating a need in the next year or two to reevaluate the city-specific SSMP and add in any newly required and approved regulations. The city is required, though, to recertify the SSMP every five years. So in fact, the update that we're anticipating is likely to coincide with that. Okay, so how does Monterey Sewer System fit into the bigger regional picture? So Monterey One Water is the Northern Monterey County wastewater treatment provider. And on this slide, you can see Monterey One Water's service area. Their regional treatment plant, as I stated earlier, is in Marina, and it receives sewage and other waste waters from the city and multiple agencies, areas, and entities within Northern Monterey County. Monterey One then treats the waste streams to various regulatory compliance levels. And overall, they essentially reintroduce water, freshwater, back into the environment in three methods. They produce non-coatable recycled water for irrigation use on raw food crops, such as strawberries and artichokes. They also produce potable recycled water for groundwater replenishment and eventual use in the regional water supply picture. And they discharge treated or clean water through an ocean discharge to the Monterey Bay. These multi-treatment levels by Monterey One are accomplishing the One Water concept regionally by sustainably capturing, using, and reusing local freshwater resources to the maximum extent that we can for the long-term viability of our existing water supplies and the environment locally. Okay, so let's move into the details of the city's sanitary sewer collection system. On your screen is a basic map of the city of Monterey. It's showing the local coastline, our lakes, and our streams, city halls at the Red Star. And on the next slide, this is the same map, but now it illustrates the city's underground sanitary sewer pipe network or collection system that's throughout the city. The colorful lines actually represent the different pipe types, with the majority of our pipes being composed of vitrified clay pipes. Okay, so the city's sewer collection system is comprised of approximately 2,300 pipes, 2,000 manholes, seven pump stations, and about 300 other structures. The city, or the, excuse me, the system is mostly gravity-fed, but it does utilize seven pump stations to aid in wastewater conveyance to Monterey One Water. The utility requires daily operations and maintenance to keep it flowing in good working order. And as Steve mentioned, it really takes a team. The Public Works Streets Utilities crews perform the daily system-wide operations and maintenance. And the city also partners with Monterey One Water for the pump stations, operations, and maintenance. The Public Works Department does utilize outside contractors as well for O and M needs. Generally, those are for roof foaming, CCTV, or closed-circuit television video infrastructure condition assessments for spot repairs and for emergency repairs as they're needed. And it is important to note that these utility systems were originally constructed over many decades throughout the 20th century, as shown here in this map that basically illustrates sewer main install date by the various decades. So it's a constantly aging system, and therefore it requires regular infrastructure rehabilitation and replacement. So from time to time, a defect, either a blockage or a break, will occur in the sanitary sewer system. And sewage will flow out of the closed system. And these spills are called SSOs, or sanitary sewer overflows. SSOs are a priority illicit discharge with the state. And to protect the environment, they must be reported and remediated quickly for public health and environmental purposes. And to aid in the public's reporting of sewer spills, the city posts and advertises information related to how to report a sewer spill to the city. Also, when a sewer spill is reported, either one or both of the public works and fire departments will respond to stop and remediate that spill. This typically involves the damming or diverting of the flow that is escaping the system to contain it. And while public works then identifies to, tries to identify the cause, once they do, they then fix the defect, they restore the flow into the system, and they perform cleanup. Sewer spills are reported to Monterey County Health. We are required to report, report those to Monterey County Health. And for larger flows, we also need to report to the California Office of Emergency Services, or CAL-OES. And then they make other agency notifications statewide that may be concerned with the spill. Then after each sewer overflow incident, the city submits a detailed report into a state database. We maintain records there, and at times, if there's a large enough spill, we do have to perform water quality or biological monitoring after this spill. So it's critical to keep the sewer system in good working repair and order. And so we must perform infrastructure rehabilitation and replacement over time. As we've reviewed here, the utility system is comprised of over 4,600 structures, and they can develop defects such as cracks, offset joints, root intrusion, sinkholes, lockages, for example. And also, over time, the methods of construction improve. So it's important to always be analyzing and planning for system repairs and rehabilitation when they're necessary. And before we actually talk about the next 20-year horizon, we wish to take a look back at the past 20 years or so of the city's sewer program activities. Okay, in 1998, the city retained CH2M Hill to perform a citywide system condition assessment, and also to help the city identify where sewer repairs and rehabilitation were needed. That effort cost about over $1 million. And then additionally, in the 2000s, the city performed further system, excuse me, further system engineering and financial studies. And in 2004 and 2006, the city moved forward with some infrastructure rehab, approximately 4.7 miles of pipe work. But the city had a larger backlog of capital repairs and replacement needs, as well as ongoing and projected increased costs to repair and rehabilitate the sanitary sewer system into the future. So consequently, in 2011, the community considered and approved a sewer rate increase to support collection system repair and rehabilitation efforts into the future. And in 2013, the city approved its largest sewer rehab project yet. And in 2014, the city applied for and received approximately $17 million in low-interest loans from the state water board's Clean Water State Revolving Fund program. So with funding secured, the city rehabilitated all of its seven pump stations, 604 manholes, and 14.2 miles of sewer pipes during a five-year period between 2015 to 2019. So this project was a large, complex, but very successful, five-year program effort. And today, in 2021, the community's sewer funds are utilized to make repayment on those low-interest loans, as well as assist with ongoing spot repairs, emergency repairs, daily O and M, and other required program activities. So this chart on the screen demonstrates a really important outcome of the citywide sewer rehab project. The graph illustrates the number of sanitary sewer overflows from the city's sanitary sewer system from 2008 to 2020. The gray line on the top represents the annual SSS, SSO total, or spill total, each year. So as you can see here, the city has had a significant reduction in the occurrence of sanitary sewer overflows since 2015, which we directly attribute to the recent five-year citywide rehab project. Okay, another important part of the city sewer program. Okay, another important part of the city sewer program is the control of fats, oils and grease or fog before it makes its way into the sanitary sewer system. If fog is not managed, then it has a potential to cause sewer blockages and overflows. The primary generators of fog or fat oil recitywide are food service establishments or FSEs. So the city actually requires FSEs to comply with grease pre-treatment before food wastewater, wastewater, excuse me, are allowed to flow into the city's collection system. The regulation of these systems is accomplished through City Code Chapter Thirty, Article Three, and that requires food service establishments to install and maintain grease capture systems or interceptor systems. Now, if a food service establishment is unable to comply, they are assessed a fee for non-compliance. And those fees fund city sewer line operations and maintenance activities and annual food service establishment inspections. The city does partner with Monterey One Water on a regional food service establishment inspection program. And that helps to educate food service establishments about the importance of grease control and fog structure maintenance. The city also works with Monterey One and its member agencies on a residential fog education program. And that program has television and print ads as well as online resources through the clodbusters.org website. Overall, the fog program's goal is to help prevent sewer overflows and help toward preventing sewer backups into homes and businesses. All right, so currently, the city has been gearing up once again to understand the next twenty years of capital improvement and program needs. And this is being accomplished through the Sewer Master Plan or SMP project. This project has a goal of identifying sewer system upgrade needs, if there are any. And to do this, the city consultant team of G Seven and Acel is performing a number of tasks, and those tasks include hydraulic system modeling and infrastructure capacity and water use analyses. And they're using that information to identify sewer capital improvement needs. The city will also be considering sea level rise projections in relationship to the utility system moving forward. And also examining program funding and financing pathways into the future. So to date, the project team has completed field inspections and flow monitoring, hydraulic modeling and flow analyses, and has developed a preliminary list of future capital improvement projects. That Sewer Master Plan is planned for finalization by the end of this year. And staff plans to return to council in early twenty twenty-two to share those findings. Okay, so the city just completed a biennial sewer audit, or the twenty twenty-one biennial sewer program audit. And to accomplish this task, we retain DUDAC to have an expert and separate set of eyes to examine our sewer program. Per the state regulations, the city is required to perform a self-audit every two years. And so this latest audit examined program efforts from twenty nineteen through twenty twenty. The goal of these audits are to assess effectiveness of the existing sewer program, identify any deficiencies we may have in the program, and make any needed corrections or improvements. The audit outcome overall is that the city is in good standing, and we have multiple accomplishments that we have achieved over the last couple of years. We also have a few improvement needs that we need to make. Some of the accomplishments include completing the citywide sewer rehab project in twenty nineteen, reducing sewer overflows, launching the sewer lateral inspection and repair program in twenty nineteen, starting into the sewer master planning effort last year in twenty twenty, approving updated engineering standards, and improving the city's program communications for which this study session is a part of those efforts. We do have some improvement needs, which include increasing our current annual rate of infrastructure condition assessments, working to obtain mutual aid training records with Monterey One Water, as well as examining satellite facility agreements between agencies. So the twenty twenty-one audit report has been prepared, and it is required to be kept on file and is available for public review. Okay, this program is funded by the Sewer Line Maintenance Fund. That's the primary funding mechanism for this program overall. And the fiscal year twenty twenty-one costs of the program were approximately one point six three million dollars. And that funding supports all that we're discussing today, including the daily operations and maintenance, CCTV equipment and on-call services, Monterey One Water contracts, capital spot repairs and emergency rehabilitation when they're necessary. And it funds all the related regulatory program activities and management that must occur. The projected revenue for the sewer fund in fiscal year twenty-two is estimated at two point four million dollars. The next steps for the city's sewer program include following up on the sewer audit improvement needs. Also, as I mentioned earlier, the city is in the process of finalizing its sewer master plan by the end of this year. And staff will return to council in twenty twenty-two, with the next step being to perform a sewer rate study to examine the city's existing rate structure and identify if any updates may be necessary to plan for the next twenty years of program implementation and infrastructure needs. And it's also worth noting that the city has been in discussions over the last year with Monterey One Water and Regional Board staff about potential opportunities to divert urban stormwater drainage to the sanitary sewer collection system for treatment instead of those waters discharging directly to the Monterey Bay. And in doing this and examining these potential opportunities, it may allow the city to better protect our local beaches and waterways and also to help augment the local regional water supply picture. And lastly, today, I did wish, we wish to mention that Monterey One Water has a new low-income assistance program. It's available to local residents starting September first. And qualifying applicants can receive one bi-monthly billing credit per year. And that credit is applicable to Monterey One Water-specific sewer bills only. So city charges do still apply at this time. Eligible applicants include Monterey One Water residential customers only, but they must also be enrolled in PG&E's Care Program or the California Alternate Rates for Energy Program and have the same name and address for the service location. So if folks are interested, please visit montereyonewater.org or feel free to contact them directly. Okay, so that concludes my presentation today. Thank you all very much. As Steve said, we have the team on the call and in this meeting today, so if you have any questions, we'll be happy to answer those.
Well, thank you, Tricia, for that very articulate and detailed presentation. Council questions? Comments? This is a study session, so we'll hear from the public a little later, but obviously during a study session, it's a discussion of the council as well as questions, so.
I have a question.
Councilmember Allen, want to start us off, please?
I'm sure. I really just wanted to comment on the last point, which is something we've been talking about for a long time that is capturing the stormwater runoff in our various, you know, lakes and estuaries and and actually putting it to use to help with the water supply. So I'm glad we're looking at that, and I certainly do hope we figure out how to do that. Thanks.
Yes, Councilmember Dan.
Thank you. Tricia, thank you very much for the, for the update and all the information. It's it was quite useful for me. I do have a question about storm drain. I noticed that and I'm talking, not talking about the stormwater that goes into the ocean, but stormwater that would go into the sewer system. Does that happen? Or is it a part of the plan? Because I didn't see it noted in, in your presentation, or maybe I missed it.
Yes, so the city's sanitary sewer collection system is completely separate from the storm drainage system. So right now, the vast majority of the stormwater would flow directly up to the bay, and there are no urban diversion connections between the two collection systems at this time.
Is that stormwater audited at some or checked at some way, some regulation that we have to make sure that the stormwater doesn't, doesn't pollute our ocean?
Yes, definitely. We actually have permit coverage with the state water board, and these are regulations that are both federal and state. And our city has a very large stormwater permit program similar to this sanitary sewer program, but specific to our storm drain collection system. And that's the other half of our work. So at this time, the regulations are not one. But the stormwater regulations do require us, we do do water quality monitoring, and we implement a number of programs to prevent pollution from its source getting into waterways and going out to the ocean. We do that to the maximum extent practical by implementing different inspection programs, plan check programs, design programs throughout the city and for different sectors. But it's not foolproof. We still have illicit discharges that do make their way to the bay and our local waterways, similar to how when a sewer overflow may reach a storm drain and make it up to the bay. So at this time, we do everything we can from a management standpoint to try to protect water quality of our local creeks, lakes and ocean. But at this time, we have no urban diversion switches, if you will, to send stormwater from the stormwater collection system into the sanitary sewer system for treatment prior to that water entering the Monterey Bay.
Thank you.
So if I could add one thing to that as well, Tricia is exactly correct, just to go back, you know, to maybe a five thousand or ten thousand square elevation level. As Tricia pointed out in the presentation, we are working with the Regional Board and the Monterey One Partners to look at options to divert flow virtually in every large project that goes forward. As an example, we're working on the Arena Lot Project, Phase Two of our parking project in the waterfront area. And we're working with them directly to see how there may be ways to bring that stormwater that hits that pavement and bring it directly into the sanitary sewer system. The challenge is, as Councilman Al Hafa is aware of, is that if the, if it's raining and that water comes down, that's the same time that the Monterey One Water through infiltration has an overflow, an overburdenance of water through their system leaks. And really what you have to do is put it into an estuary or a bay, Lake Elastero or something like that, that can hold that water for a period of time where that peak storm flow passes, then you can pump it into the wastewater system so that it doesn't overinundate the Monterey One facility. So it's something that we're looking at constantly, and we're looking at it continually, and we're looking at ways to come up with pilot projects, pilot programs on a project-by-project basis when the project, such as the waterfront parking area, which is so close to the ocean and so little chance to correct something, if something goes haywire, that we would have that backup to take the water elsewhere. So that's something that we can think about continually.
Thank you.
It's a really interesting to talk about that stormwater diversion, and I imagine Councilmember Tyler will want to talk about this as well because it could be a potential source for pure water Monterey. But if you look at during the winters, pointing out by Steve Witry, during the winter, there's so much flow through the sewer plant. And that's probably the, the time that the least amount of wastewater is needed because obviously it's raining and CalAM still has the capacity to take some of the Carmel River water as well as ASR. And that's storage, come on, aquifer storage renewal?
Aquifer storage and recovery.
Recovery, close. Close enough for government work. My wife was in my class once, fifth grade, and I said, oh, that's close enough for government work. She says, you shouldn't teach those kids that. But anyway, and so the pilot, the pilot project, probably you're looking at stormwater, believe it or not, there's still water drainage and runoff when it's not raining because it flows, obviously. You go to New Monterey and look at the springs that are constantly flowing. So the art form is, when you do have stormwater, where do you store it? Lake Elastero, the Naval Lake, that's only going to hold so much. The idea of can you put it in the seaside basin probably needs to be purified more before that happens. And as Tricia pointed out, if we don't have the infrastructure, you're talking millions, maybe billions of dollars. On the other hand, are there smaller projects that we can do to capture fifteen, twenty, twenty-five, fifty, a hundred feet of acre-feet of water? Because that's significant in a small town. So that's kind of the art from going forth, and I know it's being discussed out there. Tyler, please. Councilmember Tyler.
Yeah, Tricia, thank you for the wonderful presentation. You're super knowledgeable, so I definitely could spend some one-on-one time with you to spare my colleagues and the public here on all the technical questions that I have, but it would be fun, I promise you. You sound like you're really into this.
We look forward to these questions.
Definitely.
Don't get me wrong, Mayor, I still have quite a few questions here, so bear with me.
Oh, I thought you asked it already.
Nice try, Mayor. So my first question, and this might be maybe a question more for Steve, but I'm wondering, how does the projects associated with Measure P and S, and this is spoken to a little bit, I think, in the, in the presentation, but also in the staff report, work in coordination with efforts with electrical upgrades, wastewater, potable water? How do we make sure that those are in alignment? Because I hear from a lot of residents that are concerned when they see the road being dug up several times in a short period of time, what's going on there? And of course, I imagine that there's reasons why that happens, but if that could be described a little bit, I think that would be helpful. Certainly. What we try to do with that process is work with our utilities or other, other agencies as closely as possible to get their master plans and their schedules. And we incorporate that into our layout and rollout of the Measure P streets, Measure S streets, and so forth, that infrastructure. Unfortunately, what ends up happening is that many times, these plans change. As Tricia pointed out, we ourselves are doing a master plan for a sanitary sewer program. And part of the, the work that goes along with that is how do we become resilient for seawater rise? And that may be identifying a new main that has to be installed based upon the study that's happening today, which we don't know about. We can't pause the cost-effective repairs to streets to wait for other studies to come forward. So because it's that, that aspect of if we wait too much, we have another layer of improvement that has to go on, perhaps on a slurry to an overlay. We've had the discussion about how the more in-depth the construction of a road is, the more costly it is. We want to make sure our roads are maintained at the highest level as possible so the repair is as cheap as possible. We coordinate with our partner agencies, be it AT&amp;T, be it PG&E, be it CalAM, on a regular routine basis. But still, what happens is either there may be a line break as we see with CalAM. Tricia had a slide that identified how old our infrastructure is. A lot of CalAM's water system is that same era, and they break, and they have to go through and they have to repair it. There really is no way to forecast when their lines will break. One of the things we have implemented, though, to help with our process in terms of making sure that the residents' money that's spent on Measure P and Measure S is effective is when we have, it's, it's, it's called a no-cut policy, but really what it is, is it penalizes agencies or folks who have to cut into a street that's freshly paved. And the penalty is really they have to bring it back to a state of good repair. What it is in a nutshell is if, is if the road has been resurfaced, I'm sorry, reconstructed with a new layer of asphalt, and someone has to go in there and cut it for whatever reason, they have to put, they have to repair that, obviously. and then put a slurry coat over the top so it wears much longer than it used to. If a road is slurried, it's a two-year timeframe that works in that process. We're in the process of implementing that, that's something that's fairly recent. It got a kind of a little bump, honestly, with COVID in terms of how it was being laid out. But now we're getting to a more normalized function. That's our that's our policy as we deal with these tests going forward. Bottom line, we try to work with the agencies as much as possible, but there are things that just that happen. For example, what we're seeing downtown on Franklin Street is we just did a large sewer project, a storm drain project down there. We have some other ADA improvements that are that are planned for later this year, early 2022. There was a question that we received, that's kind of rough out there, when is that going to be paid? We're going to wait a little bit because we just got wind that Cal- PG&E is going to do some major work at the substation at Figueroa and Del Monte. So with that major work effort going on, we're going to delay our pavement because we don't want it to be destroyed essentially by that large work over there. So on the large process, we're coordinating closely and trying to stagger our work. But on occasion, things do happen and they they it's things happen. That was a beautiful response, I appreciate that, Steve. That was helpful for me and I'm sure for folks listening in to kind of have some context. I have some more questions, but Mayor, I see your hand up. Did you have something on this point?
Go ahead. No, that was an interesting point, the whole idea of dig dig once.
Mayor, can I come on that for a second?
As much as we do as we can, yeah. Let's discuss that point that you brought up and we'll get back to you for your next point, okay? I think
Appreciate that, sir.
Talk about that, yeah.
Steve, uh thank you for bringing up the the comment about uh down on Franklin Street because I I've talked to a couple of the businesses down there that are wondering when that street is going to be completed. So it'd be nice if the city could could get to those businesses and and talk to them and let them know what the plan is because I'm not sure they know what the plan is. So and I'm sure you've already done that, but it would be nice to remind them. That was my only comment.
Yeah, that's a good point. And and part of, Alan, you were there when you did the original measure P, I believe. And I think you're the only council member currently who was there. And you did purposely put storm drains in the wording, as I recall.
We did, yeah.
That was smart. Okay, I have Councilmember Ed.
Hey, thank you. Great presentation, Tricia and Steve. I wanted to follow up and say thank you for your response via Hans about the East Franklin Street construction and and additional constructions still to come. So I concur, it's always, you know, good to use our uh community outreach and education piece to let everybody know. So I know that 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 is a little rough right now and it'll get better. Keeping in mind what was done for the construction, I don't remember the machinery. Buried under the ground, it catches storm drain. What what's the name for the machine that we put downtown at East Franklin and Tyler or Washington?
That is a storm tech chamber that performs trash capture and sediment capture.
Okay, so I guess we'll see how it's effective after we get some rain. So we hope we have a great year with rain and we'll see how effective that is. Are there future opportunities for a system like that throughout the rest of the town? Specifically like in Cannery Row at the base of the the hill, where we have um, you know, more apparent runoff that's going right down the hill on streets that are eastbound towards the ocean. So Pacific Grove being north, all of the streets that are coming down, David Hoffman or Hoffmann, you know, Irving, I mean, you know, those streets, so any of those streets that has the water coming down towards the ocean. Uh and if we put that in a master plan and said, gee, wouldn't it be nice if we could spend another hundred, hundreds of millions of dollars along those base of the hills? Uh is there any such a thing of planning ahead for the future to determine where those could be capturing the storm runoff? And anticipating what the cost would probably be just in New Monterey to capture coming down off of the hill?
So I'll I'll start with a short answer and then then go to Tricia for a little more detailed answer. The short answer is yes, and we look at this all the time. A storm scepter that we put in on Franklin is similar to an interceptor that we put next to Robert's Lake when we were working on the measure S project down there. And as well, that's one we installed in North Fremont uh over there as well. But when that project went in, we actually put a storm scepter type of of system over there. So what we do is try to look for opportunities when we're there, back to the dig ones where it makes sense to put this infrastructure in place. Now, also, aside from just, you know, it almost sounds like happenstance, but it's not. Because what's working on on the other side, one of Tricia's hats, and she wears many hats, but one of Tricia's, one of the other hats she utilizes, is looking at how we can be compliant with our storm drain regulation to make sure that we are getting that water clean as possible before it goes to ocean outfall. So what we're looking at is a longer term, about a 20-year process of implementation of how we can hit those goals. And there's a map that we prepared, working with the team to identify where those opportune locations are. So when a project like Franklin came forward and we brought the team together to see, because we have our our environmental team and our engineering team, although they, you know, they all they all have their own teams, they all are focused, but we bring them together on a regular basis to discuss and say, hey, we're here on Franklin. And the environmental side says, hey, this is a great spot for it, it hits our map, let's make it happen. Let's get to council, let's go for the process and make it happen as one. So there is a larger master plan that's being being vetted. It's trying to determine which mechanical or which system goes place where and the best. And I'll turn over to Tricia for a little more clarification on that.
Sure, yes, thank you, Steve. Yes, in Cannery Row area, actually, in the past, there have been investigations of how we could potentially perform urban diversion of storm waters to the sanitary sewer in that location and or do some type of treatment of those waters before they discharge to Steinbeck Beach or Mackey Beach or San Carlos Beach in those areas. In one particular instance, there was a full design brought forth and the city did, this was about 15 years, 10, 15 years ago, the city did go after some grant funds, did not receive them. But there was a a plan for potentially doing an urban diversion and a capture system in the Cannery Row, David, I believe it was David area. Now, one of the major challenges in that area is that our storm drain infrastructure is extremely deep and it also goes underneath the large buildings that line Cannery Row. And so um and it goes deep pretty quickly up the hill. And so the deeper you go, the more costly the construction is going to be. And it presents some difficulty, a lot of difficulty when it comes to the potential need for confined space entry, for maintenance and that type of thing. And so it's not to say that it isn't possible, because there is always an engineered solution. But we would just need, like Steve was saying, we are needing to go through a process of prioritization, figure out what are our priorities? And then look at those opportunity locations, also look at constraints and figure out what are the most possible, maybe low-hanging fruits, possibilities where we can start piloting some urban diversion and or more trash capture features around the city to better protect the water quality of our environment here.
Great, great answer. Just one follow-up, necessarily a question, but a statement. I know in years past, we've we've watched and had a few small fines for some sewer leaks or exposure. And I know just recently, um, you know, the local sanitation and sewer in one has also had a big fine that came from the state of California. And I appreciate the slide you showed that showed that gray graph in terms of the leaks and the proportion of how our investments is giving us the return of not having leaks, which is substantial fines that come from the state. So that's certainly motivation to do the construction correctly to fix the pipes so we don't have continued leaks. So anything we can do to keep the leaks uh at a minimal, at zero level is really a great goal. And so we should be reminded of that and success in our engineering and our solutions that we've had uh in the last five years. So thank you very much.
Yes, you're exactly right. Those are the outcomes we want to see after doing the kind of work we have.
Yeah, and so we look forward to hearing more and seeing opportunities because these are these are incremental engineering solutions. And also, we can't just write a check and do it all at once. You wouldn't tolerate everything being done at once, of course. And it's a pay-as-you-go. And there are certain things that are absolutely essential and other things have to be in phase two and phase three. And and sometimes it's slow go, but we're after the same goal, which is keep our ocean as clean as we can.
Exactly.
Thanks, Ed. Councilmember Tyler, let's go back to you. I know you had some other points you wanted to discuss with us.
Yes, sir, appreciate that. The next question is, how do we manage and ensure proper functioning of private laterals that connects the publicly owned system?
Sure, so actually, private laterals in the city of Monterey and per code are the responsibility of private property owners. We do not operate those systems. However, we in 2019 did develop and pass through a public process a sewer lateral inspection and repair program. And essentially, at certain triggers, so at certain levels of financial work or work on a structure or at the time of sale, the owner or potential owner are meant to, are required to obtain a sewer lateral inspection to determine, does it have defects or doesn't it? And then um as the outcome, if there is a defect, they are required to perform rehabilitation or replacement of that sewer lateral as either prior to sale or as a term agreed to between the the seller and the buyer. And so we have a whole pro, a new program that started in 2019 that supports with the whole idea of preventing private sewer lateral discharges to our city streets and then to the storm drain and the bay. And so that has been a huge improvement. We, though, we do respond to private lateral discharges because they are sewage spill, just like a spill from our city system. And so typically, Public Works will investigate. If we receive a report of a a private lateral situation occurring, we go out, we investigate, we contact the property owner and or the manager, and we work with them to ensure that they take the proper steps to do the inspection and the repair of the private lateral system. So that program is in, has helped us incrementally in starting to better protect our environment from private lateral discharges.
Awesome, that was perfect, perfect response. I have one last question, but there's a couple of things tucked into it. It's more of just kind of overall financing of the program. And so my my first set, and I'm going to try to put this all out there together, is are we setting funds aside for future projects? So in the staff reported, had identified using this state revolving fund loan to finance the project, the five-year project that had occurred. And and I'm wondering, is there efforts in place to start setting up funds aside now? Because even though those low-interest loans are great, I think it would be even better for our community to not have to get loans in the first place. So I'm wondering if that's happening, if there if there's thoughts about that that occurring. So that's kind of my 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 first question. And then there was also this discussion of improvements needed. And I think one of the examples in the staff report was the identification of in the audit to include increasing the annual amount of condition assessments performed, right? So these are, these things are going to cost more money. So I'm assuming those are included in in what we're projecting to look at when we're doing the rate increases. There's another element of this where the Monterey One Water, I think, what, so I represent the city of Monterey on Monterey One Water. And we're going to be having conversations, I believe, over the next few months around looking at changing our rate structure, right? So right now, we we charge a flat rate for any residential unit as opposed to looking at maybe how much use are individual properties using water or, you know, their their waste management system. So I I don't know exactly how that's going to come out to be, but I'm wondering how, if the city, as a city, we're looking at that and making sure that we're going to be in alignment with however that might change. And then the last, last piece of this is the customer assistance program. So I'm wondering, is there a way for us to look at this in order to supplement what Monterey One Water has institutionalized from their agency for our part of the waste management fee to our residents?
So Councilman Williamson, I'll go ahead and give a shot. Yes, yes, no, no, no. So there's a summary for what you got right there.
I don't even know what that is.
But starting at the beginning, and certainly, Tricia, you can augment this as we go through this process. But as we do our our budgeting and our processes going forward, we do carry a balance forward in our sanitary sewer fund to deal with anything that comes forward that's maybe unexpected. This year, we haven't brought a CIP forward to council. And actually, this year, CIP is really not going to be a true CIP because of the funding aspects of it. But what she will see is an exercise where we bring funding to a sanitary sewer, CIP, we add additional funds to it, so we can respond to anything that may happen in the course of a year quickly. Now, we do carry a balance in that, we intend to keep a balance in that going forward for future projects. The master plan effort will identify these larger milestone projects that we will have to save for and do. A fee study that gets associated with that will provide the funding mechanism to be able to afford those without going to low-interest loans. I think that, you know, as you said, low interest, no interest is better than low interest every time, and if we can pay for it. Part of the challenge that we had had previously when we got the loans was that we had so much deferred that we simply couldn't get ourselves out of a hole quickly. And if we had to do something to get us out of a hole quickly. I think we've done a lot of climbing and I think we're in a really good spot. And this master plan, and I think that the only real, I'm going to say, real concern that we have is how seawater rise is going to impact our infrastructure for sanitary sewer. As you saw from one of the charts, most of our pump stations and infrastructure goes downhill, which is towards the coast. Seawater rise from the coast, pump stations and that kind of infrastructure doesn't work well when it's underwater. It just doesn't. So if those need to move, there's going to be significant costs associated with that. We're early enough that we can plan for that. And the idea is that there would be some kind of a rate adjustment that would be able to support that going forward. And it'd be an equitable process and we're going to have a consultant help us with that to do a nexus study to determine whose fair share will pay for what, businesses, residences, multifamilies and so forth. So that's a foot to fall following the the master plan information. We'll keep you abreast of that process, certainly, and go forward. And that'll be a public process as we do that that nexus study. I'm going to skip a little bit towards the Monterey One question in terms of their programs and how they go forward. The challenge that we have is dealing with, and I'm not sure how the finances of Monterey One are going to deal with, you know, Prop 218 and that property owner fees that go forward. It's very challenging for an agency to provide a discount to one section over another section for essential services. The only way that I'm aware of, and they may have a different process, is if the city provides a different funding source to augment that, to make the system whole. That is a very challenging process to do. So when we are going forward, our initial step, unless, you know, directed by council, of course, would be to go through a process that's equitable among all the residents and all the businesses and bring that forward. And if there was a determination by council to try to have some kind of a program, it would be funded through a different means once they knew what that was, those rates were. So I'm going to say it's almost a little too early for the discussion, but it's it's in our minds. But the reality that we have to deal with is that, you know, 218 and essential services and people need to pay for the 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 costs of their properties individually unless there's some augmented form. So, you know, like I say, in a nutshell, we'll determine what the costs are, bring that forward to council and for the community for debate. And then any kind of process beyond that really becomes a something that that will be landing in your hands. But there's going to be certain legal frameworks that you have to stay within to make sure that gets uh that gets dealt with. I don't think I got all your questions, but I think it got a few of them.
Well, Steve, I appreciate that. And this is exactly the conversation we had when it came in front of Monterey One Water, was how are we going to pay for that? And how we ultimately did it with Monterey One was we took the the late fees, the charges that we had charged people for not making their payments on time. So we were able to leverage that, those funds as a way of of making it work. But since, I'm assuming they are managing all that on behalf of our agency, I'm not sure if that's a space for us to do it. So I I wonder if they're I, I wonder if there could just be a deeper conversation with the Monterey One Water staff about potential solutions there.
Yeah, exactly. There's always room for discussions on that, and because they collect our rates for some reimburses, it's all. One billing aspect of it that may be part of their purview. This is certainly a conversation to keep, to keep going.
And Councilmember Williamson, you had one more question about our condition assessments. And the fact that we were a bit behind on those, the CCTV of our system. We actually, Steve and team proactively have been putting funds into a CCTV CIP. And we are now, we just started this year utilizing those, and we now have two on-call CCTV. Services and we are now in a mode of playing catch-up. So our goal is to come back into compliance. On performing the condition assessments. The S S M P goal is to assess a hundred percent of our system over ten years. Or and or ten percent each year over ten years. And so we're a bit behind on that, but right now, starting in twenty twenty-one. With bringing these other services on board, we're now making great headway. To catch up to where we should be, and we're hoping to exceed that in the next year or so.
On that previous question, it would be interesting. To find out how many people do take advantage of that reduced sewer fee program. Because I know. Councilmember Tyler and I received email, probably all of us did as a council from an individual. Where she said the, uh, she was having a hard time paying her sewer fees. So I know there, that was one example. I don't know if there's a pattern out there or not. So it'd be interesting to find out if before this, as the. Conversation continues, how many people actually do take advantage of that program? Then, of course, you look at the, the city of Monterey that has sixty-five percent renters. And the landlords, I think, are the ones who are billed property owners. But obviously they may or may not pass that on to their tenants. So that kind of makes it a little more complicated as well.
That's all the questions I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thanks. Good. You, you stimulated a great discussion. Anybody else before we call it a night? Public comment. Thank you. So let's go to public comment, then we can bring it back to council. Thank you, Hans, to, to wrap up the very interesting meeting.
Super. Just a reminder to those who are attending, if you'd like to speak, please raise your hand virtually. We have no one here at the council chambers in person. And Mr. Mayor, it looks like we do not have public comment for this item tonight.
Okay. Good. Our city manager wants to.
Yeah.
Help us conclude.
Yes, if, if I just may add one more big thank you to the crews. That are actually out there every single day, working above the sewers, chatting the sewers and fixing them. We have a great team out on, on, in, in streets and utilities located at Ryan Ranch. You see some. Times our sewer jet in the middle of the street, and what they are doing is they are flushing the lines and they are out there. It's a week doing that, that program and also troubleshooting. And as you can imagine, that's sometimes a challenging job. So. Our, our thanks should go out to them as well.
Good. And I wanted just to add on to that. I really appreciate Tricia and Steve and their expertise. I think the people of Monterey can feel really good that we have such an outstanding public works department taking care of them. Their sewer lines, storm drains, and of course, our entire city staff. Who are serving the public. Councilmember Alan, did you want to?
Yeah, there's one other thing that just kind of occurred to me. Am I remembering correctly that our. Ocean level rise study identified a sewer main along Del Monte that was kind of a major concern in the future. Was it a sewer, a sewer main? And then if so, it seems like that's something that our long-term. Plans, sewer plans should, should at least. Acknowledge and we should, it's not something we're going to be able to fix in five years, but it's something we probably should be thinking about. About redesigning over the next twenty years. So.
Yeah, that, that's, that's part of our alternative options that we're considering right now.
Well, if you put that with when Steve Witry was talking and Alan, thanks for bringing that up, you put that in the context of the latest United Nations. Twenty twenty-one climate report. Where in essence said twenty thirty is the code red date. Going forward, we may be seeing more and more of our resources just going to. Just dealing with climate warming and the best laid plans of my cement off Gang of Glay, as it is said. I think we're going to probably be anticipating more and more of those challenges from climate warming. Not just one relay station. I want to end on a depressing note, but it's a realistic note. Anyone else before we adjourn?
Yeah, Mayor, that, Alan, your point is actually something that we've been discussing at Monterey One. So. I, I know that they were talking about maybe even doing a pilot project in, in PG to move the. The main away from the, the oceanfront, just so that we can get ahead of this because it, it is. Kind of already happening, right? When we have these big storm surges. So how, how do we be a little bit more proactive about it? The only other thing I wanted to bring up. Was about grants. So we've been talking about grants, you know, the big thing these days is the state and federal government is coming out with all these funds. And so it was a big part of our conversation in regards to rate increases for Monterey One is. Are, can we expect some of these funds that are coming in to help offset the costs associated with what we expect to put on? The backs of the rate pairs. And there was an element associated with the challenges that came out of the staff report from Monterey One. That spoke to, I'm just going to read the line. As a special district, Monterey One Water is not always eligible to receive federal or state grant. Grant programs available to cities and counties. In some cases, special districts may be eligible, but do not receive priority funding. So I, I just put that out there to staff so that way hopefully there's work efforts happening at Monterey One. I, I suggested to the Monterey One Water staff that. Is there a way that they could take lead agency in support of projects happening within the municipalities that Monterey One Water covers? But if. I'm just hoping that at least there's that conversation that's happening so that we can capture some of those grants that they may hear about that they don't qualify for, but that we might.
All right. Well, then I think we'll thank everyone for a very stimulating discussion and we'll adjourn our meeting. Bye, everybody. Good night.